The Williamsburg City Council for the meeting of Thursday, July 14th. Ms. Felica, would you call the roll?
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Pons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Here.
Mr. Maslin.
Thank you. In your package, you have minutes for the June 6th meeting. Is there any motion, corrections?
I move that the minutes of June 6th be approved.
Second.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Thank you. So now it takes us to matters of special privilege, which is always a great opportunity for us to recognize some special employees of the city. And today we have Aaron Small.
Thank you.
Aaron's special because I've known Aaron since what, about 30 years now, since high school? We both had hair back then, but he kept his.
It was over 30.
Over 30, so, yeah, a long time. So Aaron Small has honorably and faithfully served the citizens of Williamsburg for nearly 10 years. As the city's engineer, Aaron is responsible for overseeing the Public Works and Utilities Department, CIP projects, and design to construction. His ability to be detailed oriented while seeing the big picture is a tremendous asset to the city. He carries a heavy workload juggling many tasks all at once. Always resourceful, Aaron is uncanny, has an uncanny ability to navigate the state and federal process required to receive grant funding, beginning with substantial money to the city. These include grants for projects such as the Monticello Multi-Use Trail, Jamestown Road, South Henry Street paving, the Ironbound Long Hill Road intersection, flashing yellow signals upgrades, the Francis Street sidewalks, and Capitol Landing Road drainage outfall. Probably a whole lot more than that. Aaron is a wealth of knowledge to his fellow employees and the general public. He's a true problem solver. His dedication to his job is exemplary, routinely working after hours. Aaron Small is an outstanding public servant. He is hereby recognized for his dedication to excellence in keeping the best traditions of public service to the city of Williamsburg. Congratulations.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for this wonderful award. It's actually a very unique award because it is, it's given by fellow employees. And I do know who nominated me for this award. And I do want to thank my fellow folks in the engineering division for all of the teamwork that we all put together to bring out and bring our projects to conclusion. I want to thank everybody else in public works as well for all of the support and dedication that we need, especially on those, you know, midnight run out to Monticello Avenue because of water shooting out of the ground kind of nights. Those are always fun. And also thanks to the administration and everybody on the E-Team for their support on helping us get where we need to go sometimes. Thank you very much.
So that takes us now to, next item would be public hearings, but we don't have any, so we'll go to reports. And first, we have the monthly financial statement. Ms. Dameron.
Have a new one. I have to make sure I know how this one works. Okay. Oh, good afternoon. Today, I want to present an update for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. I will mention that this report should be considered preliminary as we have a lot of processes to complete before the year-end closeout is finished. And I'll mention some of those processes a little more in my report. Today, I want to talk a little bit about the general fund, the results as of June 30th. We'll talk a little bit about some of the major revenue streams, and I'll also speak to some of the expenditures. Then we'll take a look at the capital improvement and tourism fund, particularly in terms of revenue, and our overview of the utility fund. And then we'll take a look at the timeline. So as of June 30th, we finished the year $653,000 revenues over expenditures. Now, talked about the processes that we have moving forward. And one of those is we continue to recognize revenue as it relates to the previous year up until August 31st. We also recognize expenditures that relate back to that year. And we have some closing entries, and one of those is the payroll accrual. And basically, what that means is we pay in July for services rendered or salaries that occurred in June. And I know that that amount is $439,500. So that nets us out to $213,000, almost $214,000 revenues over expenditures. Now, I do want to mention the public assistant fund a little bit. Typically, or at least in the past several years, we have sent over to that fund everything that we budgeted, whether or not they needed that. This year, they didn't need all of it. We were concerned about being close. We did not send all of that. And the reason we've been doing that is we like to maintain about a $600,000 to $800,000 reserve there. I'm not going to say this is the only reason, but one of the important reasons for me is the Children's Service Act. And that mandates that we, the locality, has to provide certain services for children that are at risk. Sometimes, we get a surprise. You may get an additional person or persons in the program, or they may need some expenditures that we didn't anticipate. This can at times be costly, and so that gives that fund a place to go rather than them having to come back to the general fund should we have some unexpected expenditures there. And then, of course, we'll have year-end closing entries moving forward that can or could impact revenues and expenditures. And then, looking in our general fund and some of the major revenue variances, you can see there that our real estate's right now about $46,000 under budget. Current personal property is about 23. Communications, almost $153,000. I do anticipate we'll pick up additional revenue there. I don't think we will meet budget there. Businesses, professional and occupational licenses, about $410,000 ahead of the budget. Recordations, about 185. We get to room taxes right, at June 30th, we're $914,000 over the budget. I think it's within the realm of possibility, given the month's lag that we have in collections for June, that we could see maybe another $300,000 there. Meals tax as of June 30th was about $17,000 ahead of budget. Again, I think it's possible we could pick up another $700,000 there. Then we have our permits and license. Other revenue right now is knitting out just about $67,000 below budget. And we have our ARPA funds that we've transferred that. That last line before the total, the transfer from surplus, remember, we budgeted very conservatively, not knowing how we may recover from COVID. So in our budget, we anticipated a $3.3 million draw from reserves. You'll see in the actual column, we have a $653,000 negative. And I did that so that the $47.3 million that I'm showing as a total there will match what you have in your financial report. Basically, that means we're adding to reserves at that point, the same $653 I talked about on the first slide. And so actually, our revenues actually came in about $47,990,000. So that would be 653 above the expenditures that were $47.3 million. When we look at this in total, and we consider, already know about the payroll accrual, I do know as of today, we have about $120,000 that we've received so far in invoices that will relate back to the general fund for '22. We have about six more weeks that we'll be picking those up. So if I take the, where we're at right now, just to give you a feel, the 47, almost 48 million, add that million in that I'm anticipating, brings our revenues to 49 million. The expenditures then would move to about $47.9 million when I take into account what we have in terms, currently in terms of invoices and the payroll that we paid back to for June. And that puts us ahead about 1.1 million as we speak today. So the real question's going to be, are my estimates right? How much more revenue will we pick up? And what will the additional invoices be that come in? But I will say for now, it's looking very well. I'm very pleased with the results, and I think we can anticipate that hopefully we will not make any draws from fund balance and hopefully add some to it. But we'll keep you posted. My last slide's going to talk a little bit about the timeline. Then as we look at the capital improvement plan and the tourism fund revenues, right now, our local 1% sales tax is running about $239,000 below budget. Again, I think that we might look to adding about $990,000 to that. That would bring the sales tax up, if that occurs, to about $5.1 million. The city's share of the historic sales tax is about $98,000 under budget. I think it's possible we could look for another $300,000 there, and that would bring it from the almost 1.8 that we see at June 30th to about 2 million. And then the $2 lodging tax is about $118,000 over budget. I believe we might could add about 90,000 to that as we move forward, bringing the total to $922,000 or about 200,000 over budget. Now, I will remind you on that $2 lodging tax, I'm showing it the full amount we receive. We remit half of that back to the state, and then it's redistributed to the tourism alliance. Finally, we get to the utility fund. Looking at the major revenues there, water revenue is currently $563,000 under budget. Looking, just looking at what we've done in past years, we could possibly add another million to that. Sewer revenues currently $36,000 under budget. Again, prior years indicate we might expect about 500,000. And then, as you can see, some of our other revenues have some fairly large variances with the availability fees coming in at the largest positive variance, $587,000. And so currently, the expenditure expenses are below budget by about 1.7 million. Additional expenses will be recorded as we continue the closeout process. I don't have a good feel for what invoices we might expect coming in, plus closing entries. I can tell you, last year, we recorded about another 1.5 million between June 30th and the time that we closed out the year. We budgeted to draw about 1.3 million from reserves in that fund. You can see that 300, about 396,000 were related to operations. Another 915,000 was for the capital improvement fund. I still anticipate that we'll draw from fund balance. I do not think we'll draw the entire 1.3 million. I'm hopeful it might be more in the range of half a million. So again, very good news. And then, looking to our timeline, again, we'll continue to record revenues and expenditures or expenses up until August 31st. The auditors will be back in-house in September to complete their field work. We should have our closing entries completed in October. We will meet with the audit committee before we finalize the annual report, and then the auditors will present that report to city council at our December meeting. And that includes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dameron. No questions, I think just a general comment. As you know, as we sat here a year and a half ago trying to create a budget, not fully understanding or having any real comprehension of what this year would have looked like, you know, certainly seeing meals, both meals and room tax come in much higher than we anticipated is a blessing. But a year and a half ago, we had no idea that it would have rebounded like it did. So those are major contributions to the increased revenue over what we projected. So I think that's good. Vice Mayor, comments, questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dameron. No questions, just a couple of comments. And obviously, it's exciting to see that the draw, if any, on the fund balance is going to be much less than we anticipated going into this budget cycle. But the other part that's always amazing, and having been on both sides, is that city staff has a long history of managing expenditures. As things tighten, they're able to tighten expenditures, but still meet the goals of our citizens and the services that we provide. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that, all city staff that takes a part in managing the finances so that we're able to have this positive outlook going forward.
Maslin?
Yeah, thanks for the good news, especially during these challenging times when we've still seen over this past year, lower visitation, and even this past week, staffing shortages. In fact, at the EDA roundtable, there was a comment that some of the restaurants couldn't even open because they had staffing shortages. So to see the revenue numbers coming in the way they are, that's really good news, and shows that we've got the capacity to actually grow those even further. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, and I'd just like to echo the comments from my colleagues. So appreciate all of the work from you, your staff, and the whole city staff. I did want to ask a question, perhaps for public, to understand a little bit better that availability fee that you commented on under the utility fund. The other line items are pretty self-evident, but some people might not understand what that one is and why there's such a variance.
Well, I'm going to call on Dan to talk about the, that's his expertise. I track the numbers, but Dan can explain that, I'm sure, better than I could.
Hello?
Hey, Dan.
Had a lot of time to get from there to here to make that an answer. But yeah, it's, I forget what it was, it was a couple of big projects we did. The availability fee is what, when you sign up for the availability fee, you're, based on your meter size. And so it's some, I forget which development project it was, there was a pretty big development project, we had some pretty large fees. So the fees have, the individual fees haven't changed, but there's been some development and that kind of thing, so that's what's driving those numbers. And we tend to underestimate the revenue there. We saw it was 100,000. Sometimes, that's all it is, but a lot of times, it's higher. So we don't want to overstate that.
So when you're talking about a large project, such as like at High Street, or Midtown Row, or some of those redevelopments and new developments.
Riverside.
Riverside, okay. Good, thank you.
Rogers?
Sorry, could we call Mr. Clayton back for another budgetary question? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, Dan. He's kidding. That was a joke. But I will use an example from utilities fund. First, I'll say that thank you very much, Director Dameron, for all your work, making sure that we have strong budgets, and as mentioned a year and a half ago, making sure that we were conservative in our estimates, which now means to the tune of over 3 million, we may not need to pull such a substantial amount from our reserves. The one question I had was around the auditors coming in September. There were a few different line items there that you had mentioned would be potentially made whole in the deficit for them soon. Taking the utilities fund as an example, it was about a million for water and 500,000 for our sewer.
That we hope to see in revenue, yes.
Right. And my curiosity was, would those be in place by the time that the auditors come in September?
Yes. Because typically, we, you know, first of all, the utilities are reported on on our full accrual basis, but typically, we have gotten in anything that would be impacted for the previous year by the end of August. And that's one reason we wait until September until we've completed that process and have that in place, and some of our closing entries for them to review.
Right. I'm sure they'll appreciate the healthy budget as well. Thank you.
Good. No other questions? Thank you, Ms. Dameron. Okay, it takes us to monthly departmental operating reports. Mr. Trivitt, I know we have a special guest speaker today.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We're going to ask Chief Dunn to come forward and talk to you a little bit about the CAC.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to update you on GIO, Goal Four, Health and Safety, which is a design and implementation of a civilian advisory committee. I would like to keep Mr. Clayton on standby for my phone affron, if that's possible. But thank you for allowing us to have a few minutes. So as you know, going back over the course of the last couple of years, we felt like it'd be a good idea to implement a civilian advisory committee. Council also thought it was a great idea, and again, adopted that as a goal and initiative. And then, early on, we created a policy and then a process to accept applications to fill the civilian advisory committee. And I would like to say just right up front that the local NAACP president, Lawrence Golson, assisted me with the screening early on. And then, formerly, the city manager, Mr. Trivitt, the mayor, and I made the selections for who would serve on our committee. We initially started with a number in mind that we thought was appropriate, but we really weren't sure until we maybe put it in action. And that number was five. As we started making the selections, we felt like five didn't quite give us the diversity that we were looking for, and so we upped that number to six. And so we selected the six, and I'm proud to say, one is with us today. John, if you wouldn't mind standing for us? You may know John Morgan, he's been around town a little bit. We also selected Malika Bloom, who is not here. Ryan Williams, who you guys may know him, he's a local celebrity because of his training work at Orange Theory. So he hasn't gotten me into the gym yet, he's been working on it, though. Charles Gates, who serves when Lawrence Golson is not available to fill that NAACP slot that we've selected. Shannon Walazowski, commonly referred to as Shannon Wojo. And we had also Cody Armstrong. The interesting thing early on about two of our candidates, Ryan Williams and Cody Armstrong, is that after completing the majority of the training, Ryan decided that he wanted to put in for the police department, and he has since been selected as one of our police officers. So, yeah, we're very, very excited to have Ryan on the department. And Cody Armstrong was selected for a position in DC, nationally helping police departments across the country do a better job of policing. So I mean, I think that really speaks a lot to Williamsburg, and so I think it's a great thing for us, although we now have two additional positions that we'll be seeking some guidance to fill. So the heavy lift, I think, of the civilian advisory committee from the time commitment perspective was really initially, we did it a little bit differently than most civilian advisory committees. And I'm just going to refer to it as CAC moving forward, if you guys are okay with that. And we felt like it was important, rather than talking about some of these tough topics as we go along, we felt like if we really start us out with some pretty heavy training, and we really did over 40 hours of training, classroom style mostly, but also some field work, firearms range, that doesn't include the eight hours or so that they spent in the car with an officer for a ride along. But so what we wanted was a real heavy introduction to the Williamsburg Police Department, and then policing in our country over, really over decades. And so from that, we had the opportunity to teach our philosophy, talk about our use of force model, how we hold officers accountable, community policing, why that's so important to us, and that sort of thing. And it was interesting for us, I think, the committee got a lot out of it because we had different members of the team. Whoever would have been the expert for that particular topic was who came and taught that particular portion of the training. So it was a good opportunity for the advisory committee to engage with a number of the members of our team, but also, it gave a number of members of our team a formal opportunity to have the chance to meet with and have face-to-face discussion with the advisory. So from that, that training was completed last month. We now plan to next steps. September 20th, we think, probably tentatively, we have our first actual meeting scheduled. And so what we'll do is we'll go from where we've given them all this background information to now we're meeting monthly, during, I'm sorry, quarterly. During those meetings, we'll talk about crime, because I think it's real important that every time we meet, we're talking about crime and crime trends and what's actually going on, what we're facing, what we're dealing with, and the safety issues that our community faces. But also, policy, force issues, that sort of thing, those areas where maybe we can improve what we're doing. And then lastly, we'll talk about maybe some of the personnel trends that we're seeing. We don't plan to get into specifics about a personnel issue involving a particular person, but we do want to talk kind of 30,000-foot about the types of things that we're seeing, and those types of corrective actions that were taken. When we talk about things like recruiting and retention, we're very eager to learn from folks who aren't in law enforcement to learn maybe some better ways. As you know, staffing is an issue that law enforcement across the country is facing right now. So we feel like we're going to have some level of expertise that really is working very closely with us, really knows what we're all about, and maybe can help us come up with better ways of doing a lot of things that we do. Like I say, recruiting and retention is just one example of that. So with that, I promise to be brief, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Well, Chief, thank you for coming forward and sharing some information about that. I think everyone believes that this is a good program. I think having kind of a citizen group engaged in our police department, just to have a better understanding, provide some feedback, is critical to having a successful department. And I really applaud the efforts that you've taken to make sure that the, these volunteers have had the opportunity to see how, you know, the department operates, and do the ride-alongs, and just get that kind of basic training, so to speak, rather than coming in fresh or hot on a particular issue to really understand policing, particularly here in Williamsburg. So I think that's a great, great opportunity for them to participate in that, and then provide feedback as they go, went through that process, and then as meetings pick up here and get the two new members on there, hopefully having some robust conversation. And certainly, thank you, Mr. Morgan, for participating in the group. I know it's, it sounds like a lot of work and a lot of effort. It's not coffee and tea, you know, and a donut, you know, sitting around talking. So there's some legwork behind it. So thank you, and everybody that's participating.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. And I would, and I didn't say this, but I should say, they have all given so much of their personal time. I am certain that on a lot of these days that we met, there are other things that they could have been doing, but they chose to be with us to make the Williamsburg Police Department the best police department that can be. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. And just to follow up on a couple of things the mayor said. First of all, thank you for being open to, you know, council. One of our goals and initiatives was to put this committee together, thanks to all of the volunteers that are putting all the time into it as well. The training was, you know, obviously, a great approach so that they understand the job. But I think one of the key things that, at least I've seen nationally, watching the news and other localities, is not getting involved in specific personnel matters. That seems to create more issues than it does resolve issues. So I think that's important, that you've chosen not to, for that to be a part of this committee. committee, and focus more on the overall operation and the bigger picture, and stay out of those individual personnel matters and leave that up to you as the chief to address those. So thank you for all the work you've done to get this started. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, so I've had the opportunity to participate in that. Two citizens academies, one on the West Coast, one here locally. And it's really good because it puts you in the position of the police officer out there and sort of explains, you know, how the decision-making you go through in split second to decide what to do. And in fact, our West Coast Citizens Academy, one of the objectives from the police chief was, we're training people who are going to be on juries so they can actually understand, you know, what the realities are out there. So when we talked about the committee early on, one of the things I was strongly in favor of is using it for communications. In other words, how do we better communicate to the community, things like our reports and our statistics, so that they get the full picture? And then also, what are the best ways for getting communication back from the community? Can you talk a little bit about that?
I can tell you the committee's going to be busy with just that sort of thing. I think it's, I mean, it's a great, great idea, great, great suggestion. We certainly plan to, you know, in fact, there are a couple of technologies that are out there that law enforcement agencies on a small scale are using that we feel like would be beneficial and appropriate to Williamsburg. But it's the type of thing that rather than just the police department in a vacuum or working with city staff, that we implement these types of programs. We feel like it's so important that we have members of our community helping us to wrestle with whether or not, first off, this is a good idea for Williamsburg, and secondly, if it is, what might that look like? What's the best way to proceed with that sort of thing? And I think as we go all along the way, those types of communications, how do we better communicate? How do we better connect with our community? It's an ongoing conversation that I'm certain they'll be a part of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to express my thanks also to you and to members of the committee. It sounds like a very intense training program. I know that I went on a couple of ride-alongs, and just being on those is a really big eye-opener to what transpires. I also appreciate your well-thought-out approach to the committee and updating us on your progress and the next steps. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. And I would like to point out that you are the only citizen that I'm aware of that has done a police bicycle ride-along. So thank you for doing that. An open invitation to anyone, by the way.
A tandem bike?
I wasn't on the electric bike, though. The police officer was.
She gave a pretty fit officer a run for his money, I might say.
I would be up for that if I could use the new motorized bike that we got that Micah designed for the station as well.
Ah, okay, okay.
Chief Dunn, thank you for being willing to have a group such as this. You really lead transparent and community policing, and it's clear that that is noteworthy and admirable across the state. It's funny to hear we've had now two members move into a role involving law enforcement, one of them right here locally and one hopefully with Cody going to DC that could benefit departments across the nation. I'm really glad to see as well that the ride-alongs were a part of training. I've gone on a couple as well, not on a bike, but I remember my last one, which was only a couple months ago, was the perfect view of what community policing is, in which we responded to two things. The first was returning a bicycle to someone who had lost theirs and it was found somewhere else. The police officer themselves picked it up, gave it back. And another one was stopping a more serious incident of someone driving under the influence, which was able to be done without anyone else being harmed. So it was a really good lesson for me to see, and I'm glad that the committee members have that as well. My only comment would be reiterating Councilman Maslin's point. I think he was spot on in having a good portion of those quarterly meetings being for the committee to provide feedback to the department on new initiatives that you might be trying, but then also disseminating that information about the ability to do ride-alongs, national night out events such as that, and making sure that the community at large and those social groups are aware of their ability to engage with your department, too. But overall, thanks for the work you're doing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief? Okay. Takes us to the city manager's report. I'm sorry, Mr. Maslin?
A couple of comments and questions on department reports.
Okay.
So those of us who are actually online, on the agenda where it says reports, if you click on that, you'll come to performance summary. And thanks to IT, they've been able to pivot this so that we're now aligning performance with our major goals and initiatives. And so the first one is One Williamsburg. And under One Williamsburg, it says, "A welcoming city where all people who live, work, and visit have the opportunity to thrive regardless of age, race, ethnicity, income, sexual orientation, religion, or gender identity. The culture of our city will promote a variety of housing and employment options that welcome a diversity of backgrounds and opinions." And so one of the areas there is the individuals assisted with housing intervention services. And the goal there for, and one of the things that this meeting, why it's appropriate to talk about these is because we're actually measuring the whole year. So the city's fiscal year ended the end of June. So when we look at these reports, we can actually see how well we did for the whole year. And the targets, which is this, another change that is really good, is setting an easy target, stretch target. And the easy target for this was 400 individuals per year. The stretch was 500 individuals per year. And what was actually reported for the whole year was 749. So that's great news. And I was wondering if maybe IT could have some fireworks or confetti that goes off on the website when we overachieve like that? But, and I don't know if Wendy's here, but Drew, do you want to make any comments about this particular one?
You know, I think that it's just an example of one of our departments going above and beyond. I think it's important to point out that all of that work was done at a time when that work was absolutely necessary, but also not exactly easy. And we're still experiencing that now. Human Services is one of the departments that has a staffing shortage, and it impacts that department in a way that it doesn't impact a lot when there's a staffing shortage. If there's a staffing shortage in the city manager's office, it's much easier for us to deal with because we are not on call in the same way that a social services worker is. And so when there's a shortage of people in human services, it means a delay in people getting benefits. It also means those workers have to work twice as hard covering shifts that would be occupied by other staff members. So this, we of course say thank you to Wendy and all the departments for the work that they did during COVID. And I think that a lot of the departmental reports reflect a lot of hard work.
The other question, the last point in One Williamsburg is unit inspections. And the stretch or the easy target is five unit inspections per week, which, or a stretch would be 10 unit inspections per week, which would be, what, 520 a year? And year-to-date, for the whole year, it's saying zero. Can you explain what this is and what?
Sure. I think, I mean, the reason it says zero is we just don't have the data yet. That's reported by the housing authority, and we just don't have the data. So we could probably have that by next month.
Could you explain what the unit inspections are?
Sure. Is Tyrone here? He's probably the better choice. The unit inspections are simply when there's an inspection period to look for maintenance issues, but also in between a resident moving out and a new resident moving in, those inspections, I believe that's what that refers to.
So this would be for our public housing?
That's right.
What about our workforce housing? Is that included in here?
It is included. I don't know if it's included in that report, but they do the similar type of inspection.
Okay. And then the last, or the number four, which the chief referred to, prioritizing safety and wellness. So that's the one that, when you open up that, one of the important things is response time. And we do highlight response time from the police department in this one, but I don't see that, the way it's on the webpage here, one, but I don't see that, the way it's on the webpage here, that we're actually reporting in this area as a priority, response time for the fire and emergency medical services. I know if you drill down into department reports, you can find it there, but is there some way we can move that up to being considered a priority, safety and wellness factor?
So my answer, my answer, of course, is yes, we can do that. But I think before we do, it's important to explain why it is the way that it is. If you click on performance introduction, there's an explanation of basically the three tiers of performance management that we use. The first is the monthly reports, and that's the stuff that we do, sort of core services. There's a lot of non-core services in there as well, but that's a lot of things that we measure that are part of the daily job. And that's where you'll find for the fire department response times, both on the EMS side and also on the fire response. And then the next tier is what we call key performance indicators. And this is new. We just deployed this. This is an exercise that we went through during COVID, where I asked each department to look at the new goals and vision statement and identify five different key performance indicators that would help link both the budget and the GIOs to the work that we're doing in a way that would show progress toward that actual goal statement. For instance, the one that you read, One Williamsburg, Wendy and Human Services identified five, one of those might have been a particular indicator of progress towards satisfaction of that goal. And so when it came time for the fire department to do that, they did not link response times in that way. Doesn't mean it's not important. It's just not a key performance indicator for that vision this year. And then the last category is what we call initiative satisfaction. And that's where we measure actual progress towards satisfying individual initiatives under each one of the goals. And so those three tiers of performance management come together to represent the work that this organization does holistically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So it takes us now to city manager's report. Mr. Trivitt, is there any?
A couple of things. While we're on the topic of GIOs, I'd just like to highlight the fact that we did make a change. The council has consistently requested that I try to do more to highlight progress toward the GIOs so that we can keep them sort of on the surface and gathering attention both by the city council, the city staff, and also the public. And so we made a change to the agenda process this month. You may or may not have noticed. On the agenda item summaries now, in the left-hand corner at the top, there's a drop-down list, and the departments, well, whoever writes up the agenda item summary gets the chance to select one of the goals that that action supports. And what we have said is, and I think this is an important thing to remember, not every single item that's on the agenda would be linked to a goal, because sometimes they're not. It's just an action that we have to take. Other times, though, they may be very directly related to satisfying that goal statement, the vision that the city has. So hopefully this is one step, a small step, in the direction of keeping those GIOs at the forefront of our policymaking decisions. And then the second thing that I wanted to say is just a moment of congratulations. I'd like to announce that I have asked, and she has accepted, Yuri Adams to serve as our permanent economic development director.
Right.
Mayor, she did say that she's fresh off of Dancing with the Stars, remembers the routine, and would be happy to perform at celebration.
Well, Yuri, congratulations. We won't make you come up or ask you to come up and dance for us, but I'm sure you'll be, you'll be performing your duties very well in other ways, attracting businesses and retaining businesses in Williamsburg. So keep up the good work. I think just as I maneuver around town, people have been very complimentary of the efforts that you've put forward since you've been interim, and I just want to congratulate you. So welcome. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Okay. Ms. Shelton, want to add to anything you said Monday?
Nothing today.
All right. So I don't believe we have any unfinished business, so that'll take us to new business. First, we have the consideration and approval of Resolution 22-17, Budget Amendment for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2022. Mr. Dameron?
This is a little bit of cleanup work going back to the previous year. We had a couple of grants. We want to make sure we have appropriated. The first is in the general fund for a total of $6,570. It's from the DMV, and it's for selective enforcement, and specifically it deals with enforcement of speed and alcohol violations and also pedestrian safety. And then in the law enforcement block grant fund, we have a total of $19,494 that we're asking to be appropriated, and that's from Department of Criminal Justice Grants, typically used in law enforcement for equipment and such things. So we would recommend that you appropriate those funds to be reflected in the budget.
Thank you. Well, makes sense that we apply for grants, and I appreciate and applaud all the efforts to go out and find these, because every dollar helps. So thank you for that. Any questions or comment, council? Your motion?
So I move that city council approve Resolution 22-17 as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us now to item B, consideration and approval of the request by IT LLC, and approval of Bravo Maritime Group Incorporated to occupy space in the Governor Berkeley's Professional Center. Ms. Griffin?
I think I'm going to handle this one. So in 1977, these restrictive covenants were adopted for this development that list a number of professional uses which are allowed in the development. And the last item on that list is other professional uses approved by the Williamsburg City Council. So that's a legacy from decades and decades ago that from time to time, we still have to deal with. The applicant has requested approval from the city council to operate a security training business at one of the properties, which is more specifically defined in the letter that you have attached to your agenda item summary. The use is not inconsistent with the other uses that are in the development as educational services, and so the staff recommendation is that city council approve that use. Mr. Zhang represents the applicant. If you have any specific questions.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Zhang, would you like to come up and make a presentation? None?
Yeah, I was just wondering if the owner or Mr. Zhang would talk a little bit more about exactly, so the public hears exactly what it is, what type of business it is.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here before you all today. My name is Benny Zhang. I'm an attorney with the Law Firm of Coffin Canals over at the county, but I'm a proud city resident. Here, I'm pleased to introduce the principals of the business. This is, no worries about it, if you want to come up. This is Jack Horner. He's the principal over at Bravo Maritime Group. And I'll turn it over to you to explain a little bit about what you guys do. I think what's important to emphasize is that, you know, we all have conceptions of what defense contractor security training entails. Just wanted to say, as consistent with the letter and representation we put forth, there's not going to be any live ammunition that will be involved in training. There's no gun shooting. There's no target range shooting over at the parking lot. It's quiet. It's consistent with other professional uses. And Jack, I'll let you describe a little bit about your business.
Absolutely. Just to give you a quick background, I retired 22 years US Coast Guard as a federal law enforcement officer. I had the opportunity to travel with 31 different countries around the world, training foreign militaries. We traveled in three-to-five-man teams without weapons because we were doing State Department-type training. So what we had to do is we had to really rely on our situational awareness, our proper mindset, be able to recognize threats to avoid them, because we just weren't able to do it. So when I retired, I actually started the business in 2006, but when I retired, I created Bravo Maritime Group, transitioned to what it is now. So I teach you not only how to protect yourself, but I teach you how to protect your surroundings. And we do that in two ways. I developed my own type of self-defense, and I say type of self-defense, because we don't just stand there and punch a bag. We spend most of our time looking at the different types in the military. We call them threat indicators. Law enforcement uses them as well. We also talk about what is the X. So the X is where anything bad is going to happen or has happened. So we talk about how to avoid it and how to get away from it. I've had the opportunity since 2014 to train everybody from, see, I don't want to say senior citizens because that's rude, but one of the meanest students I had, she was a 69-year-old young lady. She was really good at finding the brakes in the pads and hitting me in the neck. But that was good because, you know, she's thinking outside the box, and that's what we're sure to do. Now, what we've done, and we've also seen, is that we didn't really have anything, Bravo Maritime Group didn't have anything for children. So, but I didn't want to teach kids how to punch and kick. That's taekwondo, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, and all that type of stuff. I want to train children on how to use their mind. So I spent two years of COVID, I hired a former Virginia teacher to come in and help us write a program that is related to Virginia SOLs and also to the National Common Core. So we have a program where we train the kids, and today is actually... And today is actually, this week, we're running our first five to nine-year-old summer camp and today is the fourth day of it and I'm still alive, so we're still doing good. And what we've done, we've based our kids' programs on my time and experiences in the Coast Guard where I found myself in situations that weren't really that bright for me to be in. So we've taken those stories. We've done what we've created a word called Kidify and we've kind of dumbed it down. This is a quick example. This is a book we've written and we have four for each age group. And, you know, this one is, you know, the shark who wanted the shiny and Jack the Coastie obviously is obviously the hero, right? So we based our entire week summer camp on this book. And at no time are we punching, are we kicking, but we're talking about who can we trust? Who's community leaders that we can go to for help? Teachers, engineers, obviously police, EMT, you name it, what have you. But we also push, press upon what if they're at Target shopping? Well, then we say people with uniform and people that work at Target, they wear red shirts. That's a uniform. Those are people we can go to. Unfortunately, back in the 80s, the whole stranger danger kind of messed up things a little bit. If anybody's not familiar with the statistics, 93% of all assaults on children occur from people they know, not from strangers. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to say, who can you trust? Because there are times you need to go up to an adult, but an adult never needs help finding their pet or their animal. So trying to understand that and working with five to nine-year-olds. That's what we are looking to do. Everything else that we do, threat assessment wise, we do at location. If we do threat assessments on a church, then I'll go to that church and do the assessment, work with the church security staff. Our biggest thing that we do, we push, is I teach a gross motor skill for adults, self-defense that requires no weapons. I don't, I've worked with people who have carry concealed. Once you already have carry concealed because of my training, then we'll go further on. Obviously, we're not going to do carry concealed training at 1162 Professional Drive. We have off-site ranges that we can go to and stuff. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you. And I think it was important, Mr. Zhang keyed in on it in the beginning, was that when most people in the community hear security or someone that's been associated with the military, the first thing they go to is weapons in their mind. So I think it's important to know that there won't be weapons on site at this facility.
And also we'll note, Mr. Vice Mayor, to your point, like Mr. Horner represented, if there are trainings to prevent active shooter situations, OSHA, FEMA, natural disaster mitigation responses, still conduct it off-site to that client's location. Because obviously, if, for example, if we've got a building, he does an entire assessment of the building, the space, and obviously you have to, it's all unique towards that particular business. So he'll be on that site conducting that whole training. What we contemplate for this particular site, 1162 is mostly office space. There'll be training, there'll be classes, again, very quiet, professional and obviously very compatible with other uses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramsey.
Can I give you an example of what kind of?
Can I give a quick example? Is that all right?
Well, it's probably not necessary, but I.
They will invite you at another time and give you guys a demonstration.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
No.
No questions.
Well, it just, it strikes me that, you know, this type of use in a professional park, given the circumstances of what they're doing, in addition to accounting services that'll be adjoining in the office building, I think is a good use for the area, so.
And very relevant to today's times, too. So I move that city council approve educational services provided by Bravo Maritime Group Inc. as a professional use of property located at 1162 Professional Drive pursuant to the restrictions for Governor Berkeley Professional Center dated September 12, 1977.
Second.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Thank you. Guess some second thought, Mr. Horner. If you were going to use some sort of tactic on Mr. Zhang, we might enjoy saying that. I guess the moments pass. We won't go back to that. Okay, so that takes us to item C, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 22-16, 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pons and Vice Mayor Dent and city council members. I'm here to speak about the 2022 Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and provide a kind of a brief overview of that. So as you may recall, every five years, we have to adopt the hazard mitigation plan and that's per the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, which requires localities to adopt some type of mitigation plan in order to be eligible for mitigation funding or pre or post of an event. Obviously, ours was last in 2017. For this particular mitigation plan, we partnered with Colonial Williamsburg, of course, William &amp; Mary, and then also city staff to ensure we had a comprehensive approach, to ensure we were managing and kind of thinking about all the things we would want to mitigate from a city perspective. In terms of jurisdictions that participated in the 2022 mitigation plan, it was about 17. So historically, the city has had about eight mitigation strategies that we've had. This year, we added three more. As you can see on your screens, the first couple of ones that we've had, the first eight, were to maintain and approve the drainage system maintenance, including increased sediment and debris clearance, which Mr. Clayton and his team does in Public Works. Planning in conjunction with other city departments continues to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which ironically, the city participated, started in 1981. The Fire Department Emergency Management still continues to storm ready designation. Colonial Williamsburg does their tree maintenance program, which helps fire and police have access to their facilities and critical infrastructure and also for pedestrian safety. We continue to monitor our shelter generator program. And we also continue to work with William &amp; Mary on the use of the McCormick Nagelson Tennis Center as a post-event center in the event that we were to use that. Continue to work with our GIS and our digital mapping program, which I'm really proud that with the integration of that position several years ago with Mark's team, we've really have done some phenomenal work, not just with emergency management, but the city as a whole, which has been tremendously beneficial. Continue to expand in our CERT training and capacity in our neighborhoods to help us with that initial dashboard windshield surveys of what's going on in our communities. And the next, the next ones that we have are through the expanding of social media's use, which we continue to do with our EverBridge, which you guys are familiar with, and we work with Nicole and the PIO and other city staff to ensure that we're communicating with the public through a variety of different ways. The last three are the new ones this year that we're pretty proud of. One is bringing William &amp; Mary's Hazard Mitigation Plan in. So when the university has events, we're able to help them apply and get grants to help manage any pre or post things, which is an addition from the previous 2017 mitigation plan. We also working with Mark and his team at putting in cybersecurity. Obviously, it's a new threat to us, so we want to go ahead and put some language in our coop, our continuity of operations plan, including cybersecurity and utility continuity and redundancy. So in the event that we have an event and we have some, any financial impacts with that, we could try to get some mitigation grants to help us maneuver through that. And last, again, one of the things that we welcome are the special events and we want visitors to come to the city. And we put this in in terms of how public safety, Chief Dunn's group, obviously the fire department and all the other city staff who are involved in the command and control of bringing these different large assembly events into the city. So we added that to our mitigation strategies as well. So those are the 11 mitigation strategies that are in 2022's plan as it pertains to the city of Williamsburg. And of course, staff's recommendation is for you, city council, to endorse a resolution that adopts this so that we'll be eligible for grant funding for the next five years until we're up in 2027. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the effort that goes into this. I know everything you do seems like a lot of work to me. I mean, all the planning and meetings and strategies that you have to develop and safety performance checks and everything. So I appreciate all the work that the department does in conjunction with the partners in the area and certainly the region and all the staff members that participate. Chief has some questions or critiques? I don't know.
Larry, was there cost?
There was. We did not pay it. It was a grant chief.
So that's the point I wanted to make. Typically, there's a grant process for, especially for these regional hazard mitigation plan updates. So that's great that it didn't, the grant funding was available, so it didn't cost the city any money. And was there, I know there's typically an opportunity for the public to provide input into the plan?
There was. There were several opportunities throughout the region for the public, specifically obviously here in the city. To my knowledge, I did not receive any public inquiries and they were announced through our social media and other outlets to try to encourage that participation, but yes, sir.
And then the two dams, the cities, the cities.
Waller Mill and the Lake Matoka.
Waller Mill and Lake Matoka. They fall in this that they have their own individual.
So with the Lake Matoka, we have our own individual dam for Lake Matoka. As you may recall, we certainly work with William &amp; Mary on doing the annual review of that, but that would be included in William &amp; Mary's strategic plan for their mitigation strategies. Then Waller Mill has its own dam plan. That's correct.
And then the last question I had was on the tennis center. I noticed in your presentation, you specified post-incident.
That's correct.
Has that ever been communicated to the higher level in the state that it's not a?
It has been communicated. Whether it's been received, I can't speak to. But yes, it has been communicated. As you know, just in the past recent years, we use it as a post kind of reception center, if you will, on a disaster because it's not wind rated for a pre-event event. That's correct.
And the reason I bring that up, as you're well aware, is the last time it was activated as a center, the city was, we were the last ones to know. So it's just something that we've communicated because that structure's not designed to withstand hurricane force winds. It's always been designed as post, but we ended up in, with a large operation there unbeknownst to us. So thank you.
You're welcome. The grant was of $150,000 and the city's in condemnation, as you may recall, is staff time and our hourly rates is how we contribute to that.
Thanks, Chief. Two questions. I think one of the hazards that everybody can identify with is related to the railroad tracks right behind us and all the cargo that goes through there, some of which is hazardous material. What was Amtrak's role in this in terms of talking about that?
From a local level, we did not have Amtrak participate. They may have had some level of involvement at the state level, but at the local level we haven't. We do have within our mitigation plan hazard materials incident, which has always been in there from previous plans, which would encompass the railroad. We specifically talk about the railroad in the plan. But in terms of participation from Amtrak themselves, they were not involved at the local level. I would suspect at the state level they may have, but I can't speak to that.
And then the second question, so in the staff memo, which I didn't see in the PowerPoint, it says the biggest changes for the 2022 are in section five and include new information regarding social vulnerability and climate change impacts for each of the hazards assessed in detail in this plan. Pandemic, flu, or communicable disease and radon exposure were added as hazards of interest in the region. And I know the radon exposure is an evolving issue in this area. And two years ago, William &amp; Mary, their geology department, actually did testing, sampling within the community. And based on that, they actually came up with a map for Williamsburg showing where, you know, extrapolating where it could be.
That's correct.
But I know that without doing testing in individual homes, you really don't know. Can you talk a little bit about radon?
I can't. I'm not prepared to speak specifically about radon and it's something that we would need to come back to you speak on. We did discuss with William &amp; Mary at the regional level. They had their geologist jump on a virtual meeting to speak to all the participating jurisdictions with this hazard mitigation plan. And so what you see, the language is in here, it's been added as a hazard of interest as we continue, as you said, to extrapolate more information on what the actual risk is. Because when you look at that map and you look at that ridge in which they're talking about and how it pushes a little bit further up into the peninsula towards Richmond, you have moderate risk, low risk, and maybe a higher risk. And they're still determining what that is. Obviously, radon is emitted up from the ground and it certainly could have some type of impact to health and safety, but I'm not here, I'm not able to speak specifically without a little bit more preparation than that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the update and I appreciate the addition of the three new strategies based on, particularly on cybersecurity. I think we're all aware of how much of a risk it can be. I was just curious, when you talk about this being a regional plan, there are some, you know, we're a little special by having Colonial Williamsburg and William &amp; Mary. And so how does that coordinate with the other regions? Do we have sort of overall of, you know, the majority and then some that are specific to us and then Newport News might have some that are specific to them and Hampton, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am. That's how it's written. So each specific jurisdiction is going to have their own mitigation strategies that's unique to them. Obviously, we have our 11, I forget how many, James City, Pecosia and so on and so forth. So there is a broad umbrella in which we talk about a regional participation, a regional risk, and the social vulnerability starts to really delve into the actual specific jurisdictions that go along with their mitigation strategy. So it is written in a manner where it's unique, specific to each locality and thus that's why our 11 strategies are just one little snippet of this overall package.
Of the overall thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Snyder, for coming and speaking with us about your work with some of the regional partners in updating this. You'd mentioned that the impetus of needing to do this every five years was a Disaster Mitigation Act. And I was curious to ask, should there be, on the East Coast, something like a hurricane that hits Williamsburg? Should there be a disaster? God willing, that's not the case. What's the communications plan for disseminating information to our local populace here and our peer institutions about how best to react?
So obviously, if it's a hurricane or it's something that is a known event, we have a lot of time typically leading up to the event where we can start getting out a lot of messaging. It's the tornadoes and the things of that where it's a much more unpredictable environment that's difficult to get some of that messaging out. So in terms of predicted events like, or more predictable events such as a hurricane or a weather event in terms of wind, as a tropical storm, working with Nicole in her office and then reaching out, using our EverBridge if we decide that's a good platform, social media. And then we have obviously, that's just for the community aspect and certainly we are in communication regionally and then also with the state EOC and state government in terms of resources that we think we may need in terms of being prepared for pre and post management of the incident. So I would say that the events that are known, we have a really good plan in terms of getting out to the community, using our CERT program, asking that group to get out and within their specific neighborhoods, making sure that neighbors who may be a little bit more vulnerable, who may need assistance are taken care of. So I feel good about our ability to communicate, to make sure that as a community, we're prepared on those events that we know are coming, that have a couple of days lead time. It's the unpredictable events like a tornado that would not be just a challenge for us, but for any jurisdiction in terms of communication, of preparation outside of just the ongoing conversations that we have about emergency management and being prepared.
I'm sure for those shorter response ones, you lean on the CERT program. Councilman Maslin, correct me if I'm wrong, are you the CERT representative for your neighborhood?
I'm one of the ones in Sector 1. That's correct.
Okay. Would you be able to just quickly tell those in the public who might be listening about what that program is or how they can stay involved with their neighborhood?
Well, and it's sponsored by the fire department. I actually got my training at Los Angeles Fire Department. But it's great in terms of being the eyes and ears for public safety. And we actually combined in our neighborhood with Neighborhood Watch for the Neighborhood Response Team. So we work together, everything from working with police and working with fire. And if there are issues out there, it could be, you know, searching in the area for a missing child, it could be communicating, especially knowing in our neighborhood the vulnerability, you know, of our citizens, especially elderly citizens that might need to be checked on in emergencies and things like that. So it's very worthwhile, but we really need to continue to get more volunteers.
That's correct.
And especially through all demographics and age groups. And I think that's where we can continue to improve that.
Great. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you.
No other questions or is there a motion?
So I'll move that city council adopt Resolution 22-16 endorsing the 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Okay, so Chief Snyder, don't go too far.
Okay, so Chief Snyder, don't go too far. We'll be up next. Uh, on item D, here's consideration and approval to increase the MEB, uh, contract from part-time, um, construction management of the fire station to full-time.
Yeah, Mayor, I can actually introduce this one. This one, we, we really think this is sort of housekeeping. This is circling back to a topic that the council had considered some time ago regarding increasing the MVP contract. As you all know, MVP has been instrumental to our process in terms of navigating what has proven to be a fairly complex contract process for the fire station construction. And initially, we thought that we could, um, manage the process jointly with them by having some part-time representation on site, and that's proven not to be the case. We need them to be here full-time. The council agreed with us some months ago, and this is just the action of modifying the contract to reflect that change.
Well, just as I drive by and see the magnitude of the project and, you know, the details of any construction project, I think, um, in, in understanding where we are in the process, I think it is important that we, um, invite them to come along on a full-time basis, so.
Well, I should say, we do have Jim Yatzick from MVP here today, if you have any questions of MVP.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Trivid, I just, I, one thing I wanted to point out, and I've read through this numerous times, I apologize, I didn't point it out ahead of time, but I think under the breakdown of the budget, it says increase through September 30th, 2022. I think that was supposed to be 2023.
Looking for where that is.
The last line under the breakdown of the budget.
Oh, yes, that does appear to be a typo.
Yeah, it wa- it says 2023 at the top, but down at the bottom, it says increase-
It does appear to be a typo, yeah.
Twenty, 2022. That's it.
Thank you.
So-
Yes.
I do have a question for Jim, but, uh, the, uh, and I think this, the project is complicated and, and actually needs more resources. There, there's no doubt about that. Uh, plus, being a design-build contract, uh, we really need the expertise, uh, looking out for our interests, uh, because what's unusual in design-build is the architect and the engineers actually work for the contractor.
That's right.
So on a typical project, design, bid, build, you'd have the architect and then the engineers looking out for the owner. Uh, so the, the other thing in terms of, we're basically, uh, getting a project manager to commit to us for forty hours a week, and we know that's going to probably vary. There may be weeks when it may be sixty, there may be weeks when it's not a full-time. But having that commitment, is there any flexibility? Cause we know that we've got other projects in the city that require expertise in project management. Is, having a dedicated resource, can that resource be used to consult on other projects?
I'm sure for the right fee, absolutely.
Well, no, I'm thinking if we, if we own a project manager full-time, uh, like if it was an employee, uh, that employee is typically not going to work on one project.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is specific contract related to just this job. I think we would have to negotiate a contract amendment to reflect going beyond just the scope of the fire station.
Cause I would suggest looking into that because there are certain projects where we don't need a lot of expertise, but you may need it from time to time, and, and this would be helpful. But a question for Jim, though, on, uh, in terms of where, what you're doing stops and what you're asking a city employee to do. So for example, shop drawing reviews, so that the architects and the engineers are, are coming up with some comments, you're looking at them after that. Um, if you see things that you don't agree to, are you, are you pushing back to the contractor, or are you going to a city employee and saying, "Hey, you need to push back"?
Uh, probably both. Um, we, we are, uh, very, working very closely with Chief Snyder. Um, really, he's our, our key point of contact with the city of Williamsburg. So anything that, that we're coming up with in, in any of our response, we involve Chief Snyder very closely just to make sure he knows what's going on. Um, but in, in that specific case, um, we, we would be pushing directly back against the, the contractor, um, involving Chief Snyder in those discussions. We would be careful, um, even though, uh, the, the architect is working for the contractor, they're still the designer of record, so we're, we're not really there to, to, to question whether or not, um, their, their design is, uh, is accurate. If we see something, we'll, we'll certainly say something, but at, at the end of the day, they, they are the ones that have stamped that drawing as the engineer of record or designer of record.
Yeah, and, and one of the rules is, is what's being submitted, uh, consistent with the contract document?
That is, uh, something we are paying very, very close attention to, yes. Um, cause the, the, the contract documents, uh, in this case, um, being design-build, that's, that's really our baseline. So every time we've gotten in a new iteration of the design, as the design has evolved, we, we go back to that baseline and, and compare A and B, and in some cases, we have seen differences, and, and in all of those cases, we, we have said something and asked for, for explanations.
And I think part of the advantage of having you full-time is you can react quickly to the review times, so that there, there shouldn't be any claims from the contractor saying, "Hey, the owner took too much time to review this and want a schedule extension."
Right.
And then also, I think you can sort of coach the owner, if the owner's looking for changes and, and letting them know upfront that, "Hey, this is going to change schedule, this is going to change costs."
Yes.
And, and then go to Drew and say, "Do you really want to do that"?
Yes, yes, and that's, the, the, those are good examples, and, and those type of discussions are happening just about every day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I think, you know, we've talked about this before, and it's a good delineation of the services that you're going to be providing. So welcome aboard full-time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
So I move that City Council increase MVP from part-time status to full-time status for the fire station construction project.
Second?
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Okay. Next is consideration and approval of the Fire Station Alerting Solution vendor, uh, Larry Snyder, I'm guessing. He's standing up. Welcome again, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pons and Vice Mayor Dent and City Council. As you may recall, on Monday, I discussed our recommendation for, uh, the Station Alerting System and the US Digital Design. I'm here to answer any questions, and also with us is a representative from US Digital, which is John Spanbauer, who's their, um, project manager for this particular project, and, uh, he can answer any questions that you guys may have. And again, staff recommendations is to request authorization with the city manager to go into a contract with US Digital for the Station Alerting Solution.
Does anybody have any questions for the-
I, I, for the chief. Uh, so, I, I know that was a good presentation on, on Monday.
Yes, sir.
I just had a, a question that came up afterwards. Uh, so when we know, let's take the medic unit, okay? The medic unit has, uh, two, uh, staff members assigned to it in two different rooms, and, uh, there's the alert going into those rooms, and it's an escalating alert. Um, is there a point when the, uh, medic wakes up that they hit something to, to, in other words, recognize that the, the alert's been received and we, they don't have to keep escalating the tones or anything?
Uh, to my knowledge, it's not. I'll ask, uh, John, if he has anything specific on how, again, as we talked about on Monday, it's truly a customizable system, but maybe, John, you can speak to that technical piece?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is John Spanbauer, and as the chief alluded, I'll be the project manager for US Digital. I'm also the southeastern territory manager. I cover from, uh, Maryland down to the state of Florida. And just a little bit of background, I have twenty-six years in the fire service. I am still full-time, uh, in the city of Richmond as a captain, uh, so I am very familiar with, uh, what you're alluding to and speaking to. So NFPA 1500 talks about, uh, sleep studies, talks about firefighter safety, health and wellness, and one of the features of our systems is the ramping audio, ramping tones. So when the alert goes off, the speaker lights come on that will be in the bedroom, and the tones ramp up. When we come into the fire station and do our final programming, uh, we have a feature that we do, we walk room to room, and we assess the volume at full strength to make sure it is well below the threshold of what you call LEL, which is currently about seventy-two decibels. So we will record that, and we will make sure every room is below that threshold. When the particular alert comes off, it uses low-level red LED lighting, the same that is on, uh, Navy subs, and most often than not, after a, a prolonged use of our system, the firefighters will say that by the time the light comes on and the sound starts to ramp up, they're actually awake, their eyes are open. Uh, so to your particular question, no, there's not a button that they could hit to stop that, but that tone, uh, does not sound anything above something that would be earth-shattering or alarming to the, the safety and health. Uh, particularly, you know, I know that in my office, uh, when the alert comes off, I'm always awake when that light comes on, and I'm usually getting up and starting to walk out. Now, what we do offer is there's two distinct settings. There's a daytime setting and a nighttime setting, and that volume is adjustable between the two. And one feature we have that most competitors do not is we allow the customer to configure that in real time via software, so even after the project has started, if the fire chief or his designee finds that volumes are too loud in a certain area, they can go in and adjust those.
Thank you.
Larry, could you talk, could you remind the audience here and those watching about the Regional Dispatch Center? Because oftentimes, that's something that the community's not aware of, how the Regional Dispatch Center operates. And secondly, um, no, obviously a lot of research went into the systems, but why it was important, one of the aspects of the important research is it's a different vendor than what our Regional Dispatch is accustomed to.
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things, uh, the city in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, when we consolidated, when we moved our, our own nine-one-one center, we consolidated with York County. So we have a regional nine-one-one center, uh, to Vice Mayor Dent's point, with Pecosa and York County and the city of Williamsburg. Um, so we have all three of those localities that are participating out of that, and also William &amp; Mary is a part of the, uh, Regional Nine-One-One Center. So all of us are, are housed out of there in Yorktown, um, and that's led by, um, Terry Hall, who's the director of the nine-one-one center. Um, and essentially, the dispatchers who are working there, they rotate about every four hours to different ones. They could be on Pecosa and Fire One first four hours, and, uh, Williamsburg Police in the next four hours. So it re- it really is a regional concept in terms of calls being funneled in and being dispatched to the appropriate locality and agency to respond. Uh, in terms, uh, the, the second question, uh, Vice Mayor, was what?
And so talking about the regional bit, but why so much research went in? Because it's a different product.
Yeah, so the two products that we were looking at, so our, our Regional Nine-One-One Center is a, is a Motorola CAD user, and we have a Motorola radio system, and Motorola offers a Station Alerting Solution, uh, in Mach One. And so when we were evaluating between US Digital, um, and Mach Alert, excuse me, um, we wanted to, to look at those two systems, and certainly our nine-one-one center being used to Motorola products had a preference for, uh, Mach Alert, um, for the Station Alerting Solution. But as we went through, as we discussed on Monday, we went to the pricing, we looked at the technology, and we looked at, uh, the actual product, the quality of the product, and the functionality of what the Williamsburg Fire Department was using. All those criteria kind of led us to US Digital Design was the preferred solution, um, despite it not being a Motorola solution. Um, it was the best solution for us in terms of all the, the different factors and benefits that we discussed on Monday.
Thank you. And then just one question on, on, I asked this question on Monday in work session, and, um, could you talk a little bit about support and maybe some of the common failures, if you will, that, that, um, you, that you respond to, and, and locally, how quick is your response to address any system failures?
Certainly. So, uh, support-wise, we have a nine-to-five, essentially, uh, mountain standard time support line. We have two support technicians that'll work through email support and phone support for the product. Common device failures, we stand behind a very secure product. Uh, you have an eighteen-month warranty that is coming with the system, and common device failures are LED rings and speakers going out, uh, devices that may over time, because they're electronics and POE capable, go down. Uh, we're very proud to say that very rarely, if ever, do we have a recorded failure where an alert has been missed, because what we do is offer secondary and tertiary backups in our system. So for instance, this is an IP-based system. If the link were to go down to the master controller, you can set alerts to come out via email and SMS message to varying degrees, whether it's the Fire Department, the Communication Center, to let them know that that system has gone offline. We automatically turn the speakers on in the fire station, and we are connecting to the fire station radio. So even if the link were to go down, you're going to have that radio pass-through and be that secondary backup of product. The installer that we're using for this product is a Virginia MWBE installer. They have installed twenty customers in the state of Virginia. We operate currently about a hundred and eighty fire stations, and they have eleven technicians and two master electricians. Locally, they're based in Richmond, so they would have an hour response time if that. Uh, but fortunately, and I can say this, you know, out of all of our customers, we don't send those crews out on an as-needed basis or after-hours basis, incurring, you know, overtime or outside costs, because of those, uh, secondary and tertiary backups that we employ and work with the customer to, to lay out. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I have no questions. We had a very thorough, um, presentation, and with Vice Mayor Dent's questions, I think that takes care of it for me.
It's same with me. I know there's been a, a rigorous review of all options. I appreciate US Digital Designs for being here today.
Thank you, and I don't have any questions. Thanks for coming in, and, uh, Chief Snyder, thank you again for all the, the work that you and the staff and Mr. Trivid have done to go out and explore, um, the software in action at various different stations and comparing it to other products that are available and bringing forward the, the opportunity for us to kind of look between the two different softwares that, that are out there, and I certainly appreciate, uh, the recommendation that you've made, and, and you are the expert. I'm prepared to move forward. Thank you.
So I move that City Council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with US Digital Designs to provide and install the Station Alerting Solution for the new fire station.
Second?
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is consideration and direction to proceed with the purchase of forty, forty-six Ironbound Road for the use in the city of Williamsburg's Workforce Housing Program administered by the WRHA. Mr. Franklin?
And I am going to recuse myself.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, I'm here this afternoon to talk to you about the expansion opportunity for the Workforce Housing Program. Uh, this would involve the acquisition of forty, forty-six in, Ironbound Road, which would add four apartment-style units to the Workforce Housing Program, adding diversity of unit type and proximity to city assets. We currently manage the Workforce Housing Program for the city, and right now, we have a total of seven properties, uh, under our, um, overview. Six are currently occupied right now, and we have one that we're working on specs to complete renovations, and we hope to have that available in the near future. Workforce housing, the city of, uh, the city's Workforce Housing Program includes housing that is considered affordable to our working households that do not qualify for public subsidies, but struggle to find affordable housing, uh, in the city. And, uh, this is a reoccurring theme that we were dealing with when we, as a task force, worked on the, uh, 2021 Affordable Housing Study. Uh, what came out of that in this, uh, in the comments were, uh, ten percent, less than ten percent of the workforce of the city actually live in the city, which is something that the City Council has taken steps to, uh, identify and work on, and we have recommendations coming out of that study that I'm sure the city will be, be addressing in the near future. The program that we manage, we do have a selection criteria. We have an application process, uh, it's available for employees, full-time employees, uh, with six months of service, uh, under their belt. We do have preferences that we look at, that we use a, a rating scale, uh, to identify and select who will be the, excuse me, be, uh, the fortunate, uh, applicant for those, uh, opportunities that come available. Uh, we look at on-call status, and this is a, a situation where we have employees like those who work in public works, um, Mr. Small was talking about having to be called out in the middle of the night to deal with a, uh, forced main. And so any individual employee who has those type of situations would be favorable to this program because we want to encourage that and support them being in the city to respond to emergencies. Uh, of course, good credit, you have to have that. We also look at family size and the type of, uh, unit that they're requesting, uh, the date of the application and time of cemental, and if necessary, we would, we will use a lottery process. Do have income and rent criterias for the program. Uh, we go all the way up to six, uh, individuals in a household, but for this illustration, we're using, uh, three for a single-family household. The income range or threshold are sixteen thousand to forty-four thousand roughly. Uh, two-person households, nineteen thousand to fifty thousand, and for a three-person household, twenty-one thousand to fifty-seven thousand. We also have, uh, flat rates, uh, rent rates that we, we charge, um, for our, uh, fortunate employees who, who get into these opportunities. Uh, the fair market right now, the fair market rental rate for an efficiency is nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, for a three-bedroom apartment is one thousand five hundred and fifty-three. Uh, those are expensive, in my opinion. Uh, what's attractive to this appro- this program is that we have reduced the, uh, we look at the fair market rate, and we put a forty-five percent percentage on that, and so it reduces our, our, uh, rent rates dramatically. So as you can see, uh, forty-five percent of the fair market rate, uh, brings it down to, uh, four hundred and fourteen dollars for an efficiency, up to seven hundred dollars for a three-bedroom apartment. And so our current rent, uh, rent range right now for a two-bedroom ho- home is five hundred dollars, and for a three-bedroom home is seven hundred dollars. hundred dollars. There are limits to the program. So you can't stay in these homes forever, because we do want you to graduate. We want you to get into something for yourself. And so there's a three year time span on being in the program, with the opportunity for one year expansion if requested. The lease termination, that happens thirty days after, at the end of your employment with the city. As I stated, we do manage the, the program for the city. And what we, the, the duties that we involve ourselves with, we accept the applications, review those applications. And of course, as I indicated, we do a ranking to select the, the person or individuals who will be fortunate enough to get into an opportunity like this. We also inspect the, the property, and we conduct maintenance and renovations when necessary and when requested. Program highlights. Okay, so you have conditions. You just can't stay. You have to do something. And so what we require all of our applicants to do is to complete budget and credit counseling, and also to attend first time home buyer classes. We want them to establish a financial goal and do this by encouraging them to pay off their debt. Can't go into a, a purchase of a home if you load it down and saddle with a bunch of debt. So that's one of the benefits and highlights of being in this program is that you can save your money. And you can put it away, and then you can, you can kind of start paying off things that you have hanging on you. We want them to develop and live by budget. And one of the pluses from this program is, unlike a traditional landlord tenant relationship, where you have the tenant going to a rental office to pay their rent, the benefit of this program is that it's deducted from their payroll, through the payroll process, biweekly. Program success. So what makes this program, how do we deem this to be a success? Well, this is a unique and proven recruitment tool. In talking with staff, I've, I've heard that in the interviewing process, some of the applicants have indicated this as being one of the reasons why they wanted to apply and work for the city of Williamsburg is because of this program. So that's a plus. We currently have a waiting list. We have three individuals who are looking to get into an opportunity. One of the great things about this program, and we've been doing it for a couple of years now, is that you have, you have an opportunity to graduate. And we deem graduation as becoming a first time homeowner. And so we did have, we were able to successfully have someone go through the program and, and accomplish that. And we're looking forward to having, having more in the next, next year. And this program also establishes the expectation for responsiveness in on call hours, on call duty. So we want to encourage that. Being on call is not easy. A lot of people feel like that's a detraction from, you know, certain type of employment opportunities. But we see this as being an incentive, because, you know, you get a chance to live in the city that you work in, and buy good services to the city as well. Potential of this program is only limited to the inventory that we have available. At this moment, we only have one that's, that's available. And I'm certain as, as soon as we put the flyers out through the building and advertise that we do have additional units to, for consideration, we'll get more interest as well. Alright, so this is the picture, illustration of the property. This is for forty, forty six Ironbound Road. There are two structures on the, on the property. The, they look the same. The only difference is that one of the unit has two one bedroom apartments, and the other has two two bedroom apartments. And we had a chance to go out, look at the sites, and the sites are in excellent condition. We also had an opportunity to do an, to order an appraisal, and we were able to get the evaluation and came back at four, four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. We had a chance to, to check the assessed value with James City County, and that came in at two hundred and forty two thousand. And the owner of this property has a distinct desire for this property, or these, these two opportunities for units to be in the Workforce Housing Program. That's commendable. Not only that, it's willing to reduce price, purchase price of the properties to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which I think is commendable as well. So with that, staff recommendation is, is that we proceed with the purchase of this property. This is a rare opportunity to expand successful housing programs in close proximity to the city of Williamsburg. Lower than market rate offer, the condition of it being in the Workforce Housing Program enables immediate expansion of our housing opportunities and efforts in the city. The four unit mix of one and two bedroom apartment style units will be an excellent complement to what we currently have with our traditional single family homes and also the duplexes that we manage currently. And I'm confident that once we, like I said earlier, once we put this out, the interest will definitely go throughout the, the workforce, and we'll get more interest and, and people wanting to put their applications in. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have with regards to what we just presented today.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Have you been out personally to inspect the property?
Personally. And I said, can I sign up?
So you, you found the, the property to be in good repair, and your, your staff, your maintenance staff, everybody's been out to look at it?
Absolutely. And we, we've been doing this for a little while, and, you know, in terms of looking at units. And so just based on the initial assessment, very minimal work necessary to, to make it available for occupancy. But we're certainly, we will, we will put a fresh coat of paint, carpet, even, I mean, if we clean the carpet, we can still get away with that. But the, these are, these are ready for occupancy. Little work.
As you mentioned, you, you have suspicion, or based on your experience in the, in and around city staff, you find that the, these units would be snatched up by potential employees for the city?
The first thing that struck me when I went to the site was how close it is to amenities. I mean, right across the street. And I'm not from Williamsburg, so I don't, I may not know the name, but where the, the shopping, where the, where the movie theater is located.
Somewhere out there in the county.
Somewhere out there, Monicello, Monicello, Monicello Avenue or Road.
Town, yeah.
Midtown. I mean, that's, that's a selling point. I mean, who wouldn't want to live somewhere where they can just walk out their front door and get something to eat, to a movie, entertainment, and then also be with, I don't want to say walking distance, but I mean, you can ride a bike to work. So it's really a very attractive area to be in, be able to say that you live right here in the city.
Talking about the program, you'd, you'd mentioned that part of, in addition to being a benefit for city employees, obviously, it's a recruitment tool, it's an employee retention tool. All those things are, are excellent attributes for this, this program and in, in expanding the program. But you talked about some of the coaching and mentoring that goes along with the program, which I think is, goes, you know, over and above what, what a normal employer would do for any of their employees. Who administers that, that coaching? How does that process work?
Well, we, we solicit the help of providers in the community, financial providers that, that have that expertise. We've been fortunate enough to have them come in and volunteer their time to do that. I foresee them in, in the future to, just because there's not a lot of participation, because we don't have a lot of members. And so we've opened it also up to our public housing residents, just to give it a good showing, a good crowd, to make it worth their, their time and effort. So we may have to, you know, compensate them going forward. But we've put on basics of investing, training, how to, how your credit works, and of course, the ten steps of buying a house. So, so these are the type of courses that we've offered to date, and we plan on doing more.
And I'm sure that the program's not just for employees that live in our housing. It's probably something that we do, provide to, that opportunity to all of our employees?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Even though it's just for the, for the, you know, say it's a requirement for the program, but when we put it out there, we want anybody who wants to attend to come forward, you know? So we open it up for entire workforce.
And so clearly, it's Councilwoman Ramsey's property that she wishes to sell. And it strikes me that it came in an appraised value of four hundred thousand, and that she's selling it for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I applaud her for making, you know, that kind of discount available to the city. But it goes back to what we talk about when we talk about providing workforce housing and affordable housing. That delta has to come from somewhere. It has to, you know, generally, developers come in to build property, they're looking to make money.
Right.
And, and when they do that, rents are higher.
Right.
So to be afforded this opportunity because of what I consider to be a generous offer from Ms. Ramsey of reducing that entry price for us to purchase it is, is what makes this opportunity available. And so, should council decide to move forward with this, I commend her for making that pledge and, and showing a commitment to, to workforce housing, and particularly to support the city staff. Mayor Dent?
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. And, and it was important that you provide that overview of the Workforce Housing Program, because there's many aspects in there that, that many of us, in fact, just forget about, you know? And the fact that a person can't remain there forever, and that they, they're, you know, they have some, as you've said, they have some skin in the game as well, and they have things that they have to accomplish. And I do, I do think it's an outstanding recruitment and retention tool. And, and more importantly, as you stated, a goal, a goal of this council is work, providing workforce housing and affordable housing. And the only limits to this program is not having enough units to make it available for, for more of those fortunate individuals that have the opportunity to take advantage of it. I agree, this is an excellent opportunity to, to purchase a piece of property and add to our workforce housing and purchase it below market value. And as the mayor's already pointed out, people just don't come forward every day, and, and especially developers that want to provide these opportunities for the city. So I agree, this is an excellent opportunity to add to our workforce housing program.
Ms. Maslin?
Yes, as, as was said before, the Workforce Housing Program is really a great tool for us in terms of employee retention and recruiting and a competitive advantage that we can have. And it's, as in the staff memo, it's directly related to the one Williamsburg goal. Several questions. So the difference between the county assessment and the appraisal, so the county's assessing at two hundred and forty two thousand, the appraisal's at four hundred thousand. I know Barbara would not be happy if we had that differential between what our assessor's assessing and, and the goal. And, and one of the things that I think could be the disconnect here, and, and maybe you can comment on it. So we know there are four, there are three types of appraisal, right? There's the replacement cost, the comparable sales, and the income approach. So my assumption is that the, our praiser used the income approach, and that maybe the county assessor was actually using the comp approach. Is, is that how you think we can rationalize this?
I, I would say that's probably how it came to be. But I can also guarantee you that the assessment will change once they catch wind that we're having this conversation. That's just my assumption.
I mean, I, I think, I think you're right, Mr. Maslin. I think it's the, the difference between a county and a city's approach to assessment. Also, the resources that can be deployed. I mean, you're, you're talking about nine and a half square miles to the city with two personnel in the assessment office versus James City County, which is a much larger land area with not a lot more staff. And so they just don't have the time to spend visiting every single property to be as accurate as we are in the assessment. I think those two things together probably account for the difference.
They do assessments every two years, whereas we do it every.
No, that's a good point. So looking at the, your financial pro forma for this, what did, what did you come up with as the projected operating costs? In other words, you, you projected the revenue, five hundred dollars times four times per month, right, in terms of the revenue?
Well, we, we don't look at it.
What, what are we gonna, what will we need to actually spend to actually operate it, which I assume we're going to be responsible for maintenance?
Right. Every year, the city gives the authority money to manage the workforce housing, and that's through the C I P. So with those resources, we, we try to maintain and operate the facilities to the best of our abilities. And so far, we've been successful with the funds that we do receive. I would say we would, we would follow the same format. So it's not as if we're trying to generate enough revenue so that those revenues would take care of the asset. It's a contribution to staff, and so the city affords that opportunity.
Well, I, I understand that, but when we're doing a financial analysis, we want to know what's going to hit the budget. Barbara is going to want to know that, because, and, and the operating costs, I don't think are going to be funded for the C I P, are they? That would be out of the, your maintenance budget.
That would be, well, like I said, we do get funding for workforce housing. That's separate from the Housing Authority. So we can't co link, co mingle federal dollars with what we do for the city.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking federal. So the, the C I P, that doesn't fund operating costs, does it?
No. So we, we share costs with the Housing Authority. And what Mr. Franklin is saying is the city provides a subsidy, both in actual cash, but also in in kind services. And that's how we accomplish both the support for the ongoing maintenance and operational costs, as well as the capital costs.
And so in terms, we know that the purchase will be C I P, city C I P, and there'll be operating costs. And is, is Barbara comfortable that she's got budget to cover both of those?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thanks. Getting back to the, the real estate taxes, question that, with the city owning the property, will we be paying real estate taxes or not?
Nope. That's right, isn't it?
So that helps you with.
Not be paying tax.
That helps you with your operating costs a little bit, right?
So. The general rule, general rule for city owned assets in another jurisdiction, and the same is true of them, is that if it's for governmental purpose, you don't pay tax. If that asset generates a revenue, then it's, it's slightly different. In this case, we won't have a revenue because it's, it's subsidized housing.
Right. So my, my final question is, given the objective, as, as we've stated in the program of people transitioning to ownership, would we ever consider these four units being rent to own, or, because they're duplexes, would we ever consider a, a program where the employee might be, because these are reasonably priced if you're going to own them, right?
Sure, that's a, so that would be a policy decision that we would have to make as, as a group. When I became the city manager and we formalized the Workforce Housing Program that already existed in the Public Works Department, we made the conscious decision, Mr. Franklin and I, that we wanted these properties to transition. And I, my draw, my reluctance to have a rent to own program would be, once you lost the asset, you've lost the asset. Even if it is a long term city employee, I think the whole purpose of this program is to help people get started and find their place in our community. And it's hard to do that if you're constantly losing assets from the program.
But, and I agree with that, but this is an unplanned acquisition. So that if we were to do something like that, it allows for future unplanned acquisitions too.
Right. I would say that's something to consider. Once we get enough inventory that we can afford to lose on.
And we may not, we may not always be able to have a waitlist for renters wanting to go in.
Exactly.
So, okay, thank you.
I think that's a great point. The invent, we, we struggle to get to this point. We don't want to get rid of the inventory and not be able to replace it, which, again, we've already stated, not many people are coming forward with those kind of deals.
Right.
Yep. And as already stated too, the six units that we have sounded like one was vacant, but there's three on the waiting list, so to speak. And as mentioned, it's expected that more would apply once we add on to the stock. So I agree with that. I think it's creative thinking though. Councilman Maslin, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we, we don't want to advertise, you know, if we don't have the inventory, because it, it gives false hope, and we don't want to pile the employees up with that. So that's why we don't advertise.
I think we know this. I want to ask, the public does as well, the, if we move forward with this today, the current tenants that are in the apartment, what would happen with their occupancy?
I believe their lease, there's a month to month lease, lease that they're on right now. And so when it gets to that, end of that, that date, there, there is a requirement for them to move out. And there's an understanding that they know they have to move, move out of the unit. So we won't have any involvement with that.
Yep. And, and it wouldn't be the city moving anybody out unexpectedly.
Right.
Well, overall, I think it's been said a couple of times, this is such a rare position to be in, and I commend the owner for being willing to go ahead with this purchase. I had the fortune of serving with them on the Affordable Housing Program. And a word you used earlier, Tyrone, was commendable. I think it is commendable to be adding these units to our stock of the homeownership program.
I think it is commendable to be adding these units to our stock of the homeownership program. I also think it's unique that of the four units available, there is a difference in them. Some are one-bedroom, some are two-bedroom, so maybe that's a one-bedroom for a, a new employee, once they reach that six-month mark to make them eligible, but then you have a two-bedroom for a family that's newer that wants to live close to where they work. So I'm excited to support this and very appreciative that we have the opportunity, and I'm sure the city staff that is hoping to go into this program and find housing that the city can assist them with will be excited as well.
Any other questions? The wishes of council? Okay?
I move that the City Council direct the City Manager to proceed with the purchase of forty, forty-six Ironbound Road for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and add the four units to the Workforce Housing Program administered by the WRHA.
Second?
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
We do have some appointments to boards of commission, but we also added to the agenda some closed sessions, so Vice Mayor, if you'll go ahead and read the appointments?
Yeah, so, so this is lengthy, so bear with me. I move that City Council appoint Max Burke Mueller to the Social Services Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Thomas Lu for a term to expire six-thirty-twenty-four. To appoint Rachel Trichler to the Williamsburg Public Art Council to a term, for a term to expire six-thirty-twenty-four. Reappoint Edward Klein and Robert Taylor to the Finance and Audit Committee for terms to expire six-thirty-twenty-four. Reappoint Stacy Kern Scherer to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board for a term to expire six-thirty-twenty-five. Reappoint Susan Karen to the Social Services Advisory Board for a term to expire six-thirty-twenty-six. Reappoint Louis Rossiter to the QuarterPath Community Development Authority for a term to expire seven-thirty-one-twenty-six. Reappoint Sohe, Sohe Azmani to the Economic Development Authority for a term to expire six-thirty-twenty-six. And reappoint Robert Leek to the Williamsburg Area Art Commission for a term to expire six-thirty-twenty-five.
Second? Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
I thought for sure somebody would ask him to repeat the motion.
So, takes us now to closed session. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one matter per sub-paragraph six regarding the investment of public funds where bargaining is involved and where, if made public initially, the financial interests of the city would be adversely affected, and per sub-paragraph eight, for the purpose of discussing one legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by council concerning schools.
Second?
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll go into closed session, and once that's concluded, we'll come back to open session.